The Cozy program as the framework existed was really valuable because of the match provided. Because the structure we were able to work within to reach students we wanted to reach. We have a couple of things we're trying to work through. One is what we do with the current cohorts in the program as it exists. But also, just a reminder that those tax revenues marijuana revenues. Don't have to be paired with the Cozy program. That was a policy decision that we made. Uh and we have a lot of discretion about how we want to invest those dollars in these programs or. In the future, if we want to rethink how we're investing those. To have a scholarship fund that we wanna operate in the last meeting. You know, we talked about having some work groups, having some more work over the next year or two. To really look at how we wanna invest those marijuana revenue dollars. And if this program is still the right one, um because the matching opportunity isn't. A lot less than what it previously was and because we do have more uh all the control over. What we wanna do with those marijuana revenues, that that's the conversation over the next couple of years. While we also take care of the kids who are currently enrolled and have cohorts that were looking through the system. Um I think it's just important to keep in mind as we're talking about this.
I appreciate that a lot, um. Thank you for bringing this forward. I did talk to maybe Lindsay. I've talked to some members of the board. Um regarding the students in Agora that live in Adams County. They just don't have the facility, but I still believe that those students are eligible to. Or take in this, so I would like to see that expanded to include.
Cause they're residents of Adams County.
Residents of the county, they just don't have. They don't have a high school. They have other schools, but they don't have a high school on the Adams County side.
And we work with them on certain things too, just even in our organization, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Um I do like your idea, Dion. That we take a look at this. So then my question, I have two questions. I well, I have one question, well, it's two. Um my first question is is then, when we award it, I'm thinking of this as encumbered. Versus, are we encumbering like the four-year scholarship? And then we have a running balance, or does? Is it offsetting every year we have to? Does that make sense? Am I making any sense? I don't much like.
What we've committed.
Thank you.
Committed. So every year we have a contribution to the scholarship fund. I think maybe you could talk a little bit about how we. Fund the cohort along the four years.
Cause we tell the kid that it's for four years, right?
So at year four, which would be twenty twenty nine thirty class. When this funding, do we need to start blunting this program? Over time to finish the cohorts that are in place.
My understanding just from the marijuana sales tax and how you all have budgeted this is. It is a because you have, you were one of the only places to do all four years funding. Um the state usually just gives a bucket of money at the beginning and it's like, get, get five hundred students a scholarship, but. Uh which I think is really admirable. What you all decided is that. Our biggest dropout rate is after the first year of any kind of post-crediting program. And again, this is for two-year, this is for certificates, like we can award for all those things. We were even able to o- offer concurrent books and tuitions the last years as well, under the old grant. So what you would do is because you wouldn't have. Two million dollars to give to the us, right, to to distribute at the beginning. You would, you would give five hundred thousand. We would get the five hundred thousand match for Cozy. Um and then we would distribute them. Then we do the whole process again for their second year and third year and start the new cohort. Um so I know that the team here has been budgeting a bit more conservatively and there was always like a surplus. But marijuana dollars are going down. I don't think it's gonna be a huge problem because this is significantly a less grant. What they're offering, even with the other two, you're still gonna come in and and I. You're still gonna come in at max probably one point two seven. Um over four years, that's nine hundred and thirty thousand less than you did in the last four years. So it's almost a million dollars less of an investment and that's why I think Deanna and the team. Um would really like to partner on like, how do we get strategic about education funding? Um money from the marijuana dollars to think of, do we wanna go higher in these matches? Is this a good program for it? Is there other ways? You all want to see um this money invested.
So you see here, number two is that in addition, everything Alicia just shared. Can you go to the next slide actually real fast? So we are, we have right now a fund balance of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We've worked with finance, Marcus here, thank you, Mark, and um. The fund itself is bringing in about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The board was already contributing about five, five hundred thousand a year. We could continue to do that with the four fifty that's coming in. When we have that surplus, so that would be less conservative doing about five fifty a year, but we could continue. The board could continue with the investment that um they've already been uh giving to the program.
So I just had one question. I see Steve and then Julie. Um. I do like your idea of putting a group together to study this and. You know, Rocky Mountain Partnership's been such a great partner. I didn't realize she was the appointment to Cozy. I mean, in your next life, Liz Andrew, you could. Manage our program like, are your, I don't know, are you set up as a nonprofit ACC? You are, so you could still accept it. These funds, if it has to go to a nonprofit or a higher ed.
Yes, it it couldn't go to the county anymore. It would have to go to a nonprofit.
You have to get that through a competitive process now. From the state.
Oh, understood.
So she's the one we need to support.
Yes.
Yeah.
An opportunity, maybe this. Your group that you put together is the Hispanic Restaurant Association. Um if they. If there's synergy for a partnership there, and and this would go, you know, insert association name here, whether it's a union, association or. Um in H R A. We have a lot of school districts that do C T E. And they do food service, but but what they do at the high school level is that they do mostly food handling. Um and they don't get the training of. Mastery and all the different things, the cost analysis of, you know, cost of goods to what the price point sell is for. Um food, but I would love to see like an H R A of continuing. Those students that are already in food service to go to some kind of culinary program. Um that one just happens to come to mind. So those are my two items. So Julie and then Steve.
Um so I realized I missed the June conversation that you guys had, cause I was out of town.
I think I missed.
Yeah, so um just wanted to clarify real quick. So um. With this proposed budget for our our next phase or. I I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of, how how much is each scholarship that we give out?
Yeah, so um. We we even have, we can speak to this, cause we've run a lot of different scenarios, but we don't know how much will be awarded. But in the past, it's been about three thousand. That has not included what they're requiring now, which is wraparound services to support the students all four years. So A C E until last year was just um kinda donating the wraparound service part and we partnered with Goodwill. Um career services to pay um a consultant there to follow those students. With the new scholarship, it'll probably be on average around a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship that they are getting.
Four years or just total?
No, for they'll get it each year.
Continue the four-year.
Um I've been a big advocate with this data. So where did you get this number? Because I don't know. Thousand dollars makes you go to the next year. Um. They don't really, they, I think they're being super conservative, because this is also a program that could go away with our federal situation, so. I'm hopeful that as they're still looking for more people to, more nonprofits to participate. That we might see more money at the first years of this, until the word gets out about this program. Um. So we have asked to put in um an individually. Graded proposal that is higher than what they said they're gonna give. Um so we'll still go for that and say like, this is what we know from the data. That this has made a difference, that we're seeing a huge success rate, one of the biggest in the state. And three thousand on average is is important for that. We'll also make the argument that the reason some students were giving back money the first year. Was becau- the state had another program called Achieve that is now gone. And that was paying for a fifth-year senior to do their first year of college. So often, they were getting that free through their district. That has been eliminated this year, so that'll go away for next year. Um so students are gonna be in more need. Um for financial help than they were um in the past.
Okay, um and um, okay, so fifteen hundred. Dollars potentially for four years is what we're gonna be able to do moving forward. And. That's by contributing all of the marijuana sales tax revenue.
That would be just the one program, so it'd be about, like, with what it looks like you have available and it would still be more. We could divide that between that program. Cozy launch, which Lynn, I think, might fit really well with what you're talking about with the culinary program. Um because they are really focusing on career-based certificates and different things. And we can still use this um matching student scholarship for the next two years to move students around and get money. So those students, we still hope for the next two years, we can give them those three thousand dollar scholarships. The new co- the new cohorts would probably be more around fifteen hundred to two thousand.
So are 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 there? Funds outside of this tax revenue that we're putting towards this program, like general fund? Anything like that? All of the funds are living from this. Okay, so, okay, um, the reason why I ask this and and I'm just gonna be real honest is. So I'm I'm a first gen college grad. Um I got my little scholarship from Middleton Education Foundation for. Thousand bucks. It bought me books for one semester. Um it was helpful. Um but obviously not very um impactful for the length of my education. Um but one of the things I I've always was curious about this, when I learned about the 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 county does this with this money is. Is this a county's role in providing financial aid to students? And it's something that I'm just kind of wrestling with. I understand, yes, it's very popular. We wanna help our students. There's lots of other nonprofits helping students, but is this the role of the county government to be providing scholarships to students? Is something that I've always kind of wrestled with. Um and so. Dion, when you're like, is this what we still wanna continue to do? Um I don't know, it just was something I'm thinking about is. Is is this still the most appropriate use for these dollars? I understand that I'm probably in the minority here, but it is something that I'm personally wrestling with. Um just as we're looking at how our budget is being. Flipped on its head, literally, uh we're looking under every single rock and and so I'm just kind of wrestling with that. I'm not really sure either way. Um where I'm going or what else we might wanna use these dollars for, but. Um just wanted to be, I guess, just transparent about that fact. And I know it's a decision you guys made before I got here, but. Now I'm here, so I need to raise a question.
Heidi, can you, can you clarify again what the uh, it is my understanding? Cause this was asked in the, but the ballot when I ran in fourteen. That it was that they approve it for educational purposes. And so what we need to know is like, what are the limitations and the intentions? Cause even if it's a little bit more squishy, it was truly gone to the voters and approved based on the fact that it was for education. So I would say that like, I'm always open for exploring within whatever those boundaries are. Uh if we move beyond outside education, I can't support that. Now, education might have broad enough to include vocational training, you know, other types of. Advancement certification, and I'm okay with that.
The sales taxes um is to be used for educational programs in the county. And then for direct costs associated with.
Well, admin of those programs, but it's not gonna go towards like, um like drainage sidewalks, I mean, like. It's not gonna go towards those.
Once you're training similar.
And and to your point, Julie, that is not normally a county power or function to support education. But because you can dedicate sales tax to particular purposes and then it's not using general funds. You're basically just tied into whatever the purpose was in the tax.
Okay, educational programs in the county.
I think that's a fair question, that you know, we're talking about the investment, um you know. When I, when I was saying, you know, this is something that we're looking at, part of the question is. Is scholarship fund specifically what we wanna continue to invest in? Is a scholarship fund plus Cozy what we want to invest in? But I think that there's ways to interpret that. In Denver, we use marijuana funds to fund after-school programs, for example. And that was the link to education. So it wasn't a scholarship, but we, you know, it was a different um. Use, but tied to it.
Um part of the reason we did Cozy at the beginning. Part of the reason we gotta now reassess if it's the right. Is because we turned one dollar into two dollars. And you're giving.
You're getting.
Student of need, based on need, the chance you hear every year. How many of those people may not have gone to college at all if they didn't have, one, the scholarship and two, the support behind it? In those moments where you needed that nudge to say, stay with it. That first-year cliff, stay with it, we're with you. And it turned out, it it totally rebooted our relationship with A C E C, thank you. And also, you literally, where we were able to go to the community and say, we give a million-dollar scholarship a year and it only costs us half a million. And we're able to get, and it was four-year scholarships. Uh and it was fairly significant and meaningful to the point where it literally helped keep. A large number of people to get post-secondary edu- to get secondary education. But you know, collegiate education without, that thing may not have happened. And when you see the people in the room and they see the families, you literally see how we are, we are. Changing potentially intergenerational dynamics of of poverty. By simply inserting an opportunity that some of these families may never have. And those are the stories we've literally heard. Both publicly and anecdotally. And so for me, it's one of the things that I've been the most proud of participating with all of you and the previous commissioners is to be able to look at all those. Those families who who have this opportunity. Now, if the opportunity, because the match is not as great as it was in the past, um. It's something we need to explore other options. I'm okay with that. If it means expanding into some of these other areas, I'm totally okay with that. But I'm gonna be seeking that that micro-level impact, one person at a time, you know? Because I really believe that like our job, I mean, we're spending four hundred thousand dollars per unit for affordable housing. There is an element of us understanding that. Our jobs as local government is one block at a time, you know, one property at a time and one person at a time. And so for me, when you look back and you aggregate that, that's how we make incremental change in local government. So that's all I seek is whatever we do, I just, I'm gonna still look at that North Star and ask that we keep that in mind.
Um this is Emma agrees with Steve Day. Um and I completely agree with Steve and everything he said. And I think also when we look at our spectrum of programs, um this, yes, the match was a huge deciding factor.
Stretch the dollar.
Yeah, stretch the dollar. Who doesn't love free money?
Right?
Um also, um I think that. We're doing something that no one else is really doing. I think we're able to serve students that don't have a lot of access to other scholarships. And when you look at the spectrum of economic offerings in Adams County. Our high school graduation rate and our college completion rate are below our peers. And so when you look at the job opportunity spectrum. In Adams County, this scholarship effort is something we have been able to do with dedicated funds. To expand the types of jobs that our students qualify for, so that we have more of a diversity of offerings. And so for me, this is about um trying to lift up our community both in that example, because. You talked about how important it was to be a first-generation college student. By supporting primarily first-generation college students, we are changing families. And we are changing generations. And so I, for me, like Steve. This program is something I've been remarkably proud of and the success like rates just really speak for themselves. And there's very few things that we do where we have this kind. Of success that is double the state average, that has this, you know, seventy-nine percent completion rate. That really moves students along and helps them change their families and get over barriers. And so. If this was the only economic development or workforce thing we were doing. I'd be like, no, we can't do one thing. But if you're using this in our offerings, I think is really helpful, particularly. When we continue to have lower than other county, our peer, neighbor counties, high school graduation, college enrollment, college completion rates.
So I'm gonna offer a little bit. Maybe different perspective and I really appreciate. Um your courage, Julie, to bring this up, cause it's something that I brought up when I was a new commissioner. And I was told, and this is how it is, and and sit there and be quiet, um because of all these great statistics. I really struggle with this. I'm also um a first generation. Second in my family, my sister got her degree, I followed in her footsteps. Um. Had I not had an employer, which was Adams County Government, offer a tuition reimbursement program. I would not have completed my degree. And so I think when you're faced with situations as a student, as a family that struggles, um. You sacrifice a lot. And what does that sacrifice look like for you? Is the individual? You know, a family, individual decision. Um this was, that was my only path forward. Was to lean into a tuition reimbursement program because um. As a young person, I had no debt, I had one car payment, um. And there was no way that I could support myself, get into a loan until a head program under the Clinton administration came along. Um was able to send myself to college. So I struggle with the depth, uh we do two and four-year scholarships and yes, we reached seven hundred and fifty students. Over ten years, but we have thousands of kids that graduate every single year. Um. And I don't, I don't know where that dividing line is, is where we can offer certificates. Um to kiddos that maybe you do get a food, not not food service, but you do get maybe a culinary degree. You do get a two-year degree. And you know, everyone that I, one of my niece's friends went through this program and she's. A dental hygienist. I think it took her two years to go through it. And so. I don't know the impact, again, on. It has to be a four-year degree, if we can help more students through a certificate program or through two-year.
We already do that. Doesn't it says we have two.
But this is all, I, that's what I'll just clarify is, as long as it's a public institution, it can be a certificate program, two-year concurrent. Or four-year. I do think the emphasis the districts have placed in the past in their allocations. Were often on four years or two years. Um I do think there's a path forward and this is an opportunity with the new grant cycle. Um I have uh several different ideas. One of them being what what was challenging about the old model was, once we gave that allocation to a district. That money had to follow that cohort and you'd have fifteen percent dropout, right, by the four years? And that had to be like reallocated right in that cohort. That was something that was put into place to try and do an equitable. Distribution to all the districts with, if this is gonna be dispersed, it would not be, we would not be able to manage it that way. And so we could do something of saying like, this is how many, you know, this is. How many, we're gonna, we're gonna aim for this many certificate uh programs, we're gonna aim for this and here's that. You can open your scholarship applications around this and then we'll make the decision about how many of each or whatever those goals and metrics. Um we wanna be, but as long as it's a public institution, we've run into a lot of problems with private apprenticeships or like. Hensel Phelps or book and tuitions, we can't do any of that. It has to go to a public institution. And so the certificate programs are usually run through Front Range or. Or uh Red Rocks and those programs where we can actually then give the money to the school. We can also do something uh where it's called the Last Dollar, so that this goes in after other scholarships and they maximize. The amount of all their scholarships and it doesn't reduce their financial aid award at the. So there are options around that. I'm a first gen too, so have been through, I just. Paid off my student loan yesterday and my son starts college next year, so, you know, no retirement, but. So I'm also, the this process is like a really messy financial aid algorithm with the state. And seems to be getting messier, but there are things we can do as long as it's to a public institution. And that is the requirement. And if you wanna make it that the residents of Adams County, that could be the requirement. Um but but if you wanna alter them, make it that they can't, like, what high schools they go to, we could do that. But that way eliminate people who live in Adams County that do go to Pinnacle or do go to um.
There there, there's a distinction on the board about to co- have a conversation about. Charter versus traditional public versus somebody who goes to a traditional public but lives in the county. So there's different nuances on the table here that that we need to address. I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that we acknowledge.
I would just say, um. You know, we're ten years in. I know that this came through, came to us because of the funding changes um at the state level. And with the grant matches. And I think that we, I'll I'll be honest, when I voted. I remember when this was on the ballot and I voted, I took education as not necessarily. Educational scholarships. I took it as education and marijuana and addiction. Um. A more pub- public, public announcement, public announcement versus individual education. Aspirations. So I would just say, ten years in, um. I'm open to looking at this program. I know you're here because of funding, but even if it's program requirement, something that we also look at that. Meets, you know, the board's desires and meets the needs of in our community. So with that, Kathy.
Thanks. So a couple of things, I I think also when a lot of people voted in twenty fourteen, they thought. That this tax revenue from legalized legalized marijuana was going to. Uh fill our cough, our school, public school coffers overflowing and we'd never have to worry about public school education again. And I think that's, I think some, I mean, I think that's how some people interpreted education on that. So I think in in light of the the stipulation that this goes to, I mean, I think the scholarships are great and I like. How the cohorts have been handled because I'm seeing, I have a, I have a sophomore and a. Junior in college this year, let's start this next week. And I have watched, I have different experiences with my own sons. I've seen other and and heard what their friends are going through. I really caution against going a mile wide and an inch deep. I think the cohorts and the support services are critical, especially when we're talking about. Families who maybe don't have um a. An aunt and uncle and a sister to look to who've been through, who go, here's how you do this and and might need that extra support. I think that's really important um. To to continue with that. I also like, and I'd be definitely, you know, two, four-year certificate, whatever it is, it's gonna help people get their jobs. We have big changes coming from in the funding, I think. I would, I think there are a couple nuances to the points, the conversations Steve and Emma are having about, and and I wanna be in it too, about. Lynn, about its residency and also school and and we can craft that. Um but the changes that are coming vegetarily, um I wouldn't wanna, maybe we look at some criteria if if that's. If if it made more latitude in that, but I wouldn't wanna make a lot of changes right away, right now, till we kinda see how this plays. Plays out and um. But I believe at least what you're talking about is making sure that we still have scholarships to give every year. Despite the fact that we only are, we're gonna be on a four-year cycle as opposed to the annual cycle, some of this funding.
Right. And it it may be a reduced amount of students, it may be a reduced amount of money. Also, like, there's capacity issues with providing wraparound services for two hundred forty, five hundred students. We are, and I can share this, we have had to collect narratives from a lot of students who've gone through it. They are really impactful to read. Um a lot of them talk about the support services of knowing that they could contact somebody during the pandemic. A lot of students just. Don't file a form and lose it. And we're able to let. We've had multiple students need to take a semester off. They thought this was gone. We've encouraged them that we can roll it over. Though like that, that's a really key part and I think the state is noticing that. They are requiring you to put. Dollars to wraparound supports in this new model. That's one of the reasons it is reduced. However. Um and I think Steve said this last time, like, we also want as much money going, if we're doing this, to go to families as possible. So I'm also arguing for like a reduced match that we're, or that they're making us spend for support services. Because we have such a system in place and a trained professional in place and and that is working. So that maybe we don't have to put as much to the admin kinda type side of this and more to the students if possible.
And could I, um just, cause I know we're um short on time, but I'm gonna. Still down to the decision point we wanna make today and give this conversation. What we're talking about today is really what what Kathy just mentioned, which is, do we want to continue for the next couple of years while we have cohort to support? To continue to maintain the level of scholarship that we have, which would mean a little bit more match. From our marijuana funds than what we have previously been doing to make up for the reduced match from Cozy for the next couple of years. And also apply for the launch um opportunity, which is coming up here in a couple of weeks. That's sort of for right now, to manage the cohort we have. And at the same time, we're gonna be having these conversations over the next year or two as we wind through that cohort about where we really wanna go with these funds.
about where we really wanna go with these funds um, beyond that. But that's really the question today that we're, wanna make sure we're good with that plan. If we don't wanna invest so much match, that means smaller scholarships. If we wanna hold the, you know, amount that we've been investing, um, then that means, you know, more like fifteen hundred dollars than three thousand. We wanted to really get your direction on that, uh, and we will be continuing this conversation going forward.
I have to clarify, launch is also a direct match, so you are still doing, your dollar goes to two dollars or just not. And they're being conservative on what they're investing for these next couple of years.
Great. Commissioners, you'll see here, um, we, we tried, tried to let it out. So MSS is the, the current program as we know it. That application isn't for a couple of months.
That'll be in the spring.
In the spring. Achieve is what we're here for today, that, that Dan was talking about. That has a September one um, application deadline, so that is one of the main reasons we're here with y'all today to talk through that investment. And then launch, as Lisa shared, we already did apply for, um, ACCE did receive that. So as long as the board would like to continue with that, we have that in motion to continue to fund or to start to fund launch, which is the newer program. So to Deon's point, this is our main ask today is, can, can we move forward with these numbers in these upcoming grant applications? And we'll see what, what we get, what the state comes back with. And then we can always decide from there, starting to work with our work group in the longer term, what we'd like to do for the long term.
I'm Julie and Steve. Yeah, I know we gotta make a decision here. Um, you know, I would really welcome further discussion on how these dollars are used. One of the things that is getting on me is just the situation that we're in, especially with our working families being hit with Medicaid cuts, SNAP cuts, a C cap waitlist. I mean, if we wanna talk about how we could really impact those families, I mean, you know, maybe it is an after-school childcare opportunity um, that some of these dollars could go to. That's, that's huge. That means somebody gets to work. Um, I mean, we're, we're in such of a new world, or a completely new world than when this uh, program was originally put in place. Our county has so many other needs. Um, and again, I'm not against kids getting scholarships, but I'm also just saying, you know, our, we have other county needs that this money could go towards. You know, after-school programs is huge. Uh, that could be a great example and I'm sure there's lots of other examples. Um, you know, maybe it, it goes to more kids doing trade schools, I'm not sure if that's, trade schools are included, okay?
As long as it's in public, yeah.
As long as it's public, okay.
And that's the state marijuana stipulation, yes.
Front Range has a pretty robust training program.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know, I, I, I just feel like we're in a different world than twenty fourteen when this program started. And so I, I wouldn't be against reevaluating how we move some of this, these dollars around. If we wanna move forward as status quo today, um, fine. But really, I would love to, to talk about other ways to meet really pressing needs that are crushing our lowest-income families right now. Um, and any way we could do to, to help even a handful of extra families could make a huge difference.
It, it, I would support, wait, what's the timing again that we need this? Because I don't want to push status quo just because it's status quo. I mean, if there's time for us to do the analysis that Lynn and Julie are asking for, let's do the analysis and then make the decision. I, uh, uh, my, what I was getting at when I was talking about earlier is like, you could go a mile wide, inch deep, or you could go deep and have a greater impact. And, and that's a question that we're constantly always having, is it's depth versus breadth. Um, and I think that that's okay for us to have that conversation, but ten years, it's almost like a natural time for us to reassess anyway. And we have new leaders and I just know that, like, I'm telling you what I've been most proud of up to this point. But that huge match was a big part of what nudged us in this direction. If there are other impacts you think we can have that are deep enough where it's meaningful, then I think, I think we should like, and if it means that you guys figure out like how you wanna do that brainstorm, I'm okay to put, pu- pump the brakes on this now, I'm not gonna push real hard like for status quo. I just want you to know that, I'm open.
Well, the, the, the Achieve application says it's due September first, so are we applying for Achieve or not? I guess is the question, can we apply and then say, if they, if we're awarded, we can say, but we're gonna do something different? I don't know.
Yeah, you can. I do wanna just emphasize, it's a really massive application and it's like a lot of components. They are, it's a seventy-page document, which is one of the nutty things that has happened by doing, like, they kind of put everything, but the kitchen.
Did you say seventy?
And it's been a three-year process to. Yeah, it's been a process to regroup. So to do it, it's a pretty massive thing. I do wanna say this number is up to. And every year, except that we wanna at least let our cohort know what they're gonna get, right, at, at the minimum. You, we can change, we can pull out of things, like, there, it isn't like you're not locked in. For any of this, but this opportunity will not be available for another four years with the state to match this.
I wanted you guys to know that I'm totally open for what you're talking about, makes sense, that's all.
So apply for Achieve, um, is that the only decision point we needed today or do you have another one?
The launch as well, you guys wanted information about launch?
Yes, ACCE did apply and was granted that. Like, we'd like to move forward with dispersment of that as well.
Is this funding, and I don't know if they can do it by location, um, is Boys and Girls Club eligible for this type of funding? Because I'm hearing challenges of, of the Boys and Girls Club in Brighton.
My understanding is Cozy is only focusing on post-secondary and workforce development there. Well, state marijuana dollars and county dollars are available for after-school programming. But I, my understanding is that also has to be public, so it's been challenging to use, you know, private or small in-home. I know that's growing, uh, daycare programs to do it. And so it does become, just whatever, when those conversations start, it becomes a really big kind of system. Um, even this is a pretty big system of seventy pages of kinda ridiculous requirements.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation. Anything else? You're good?
So I think, if, if I may, uh, commissioners, we, we are gonna apply for Achieve. We're gonna move forward with dispersment of launch and we're gonna apply for MSS as well because that is our.
That's what the last two cohorts that are already in. We will know what that amount is after they tell us what they're gonna give us achieve, cause we'll apply for more in MSS. Like, it won't be above this number at all. Um, it'll probably be below it unfortunately with the state right now.
And then we'll, we'll move forward with the working group that we talked about. Just strategize for the future. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
How's everyone doing? Nice short public hearing.
No big deal. Do now, right through.
Okay, so as many of you know, we celebrated the final event with Carrie Joy this past Saturday. Uh, our inaugural poet laureate, uh, it was amazing, the beautiful capstone event, very successful. Uh, a lot of people, a lot of poets, just high energy, a lot of great art. Uh, it was a wonderful night. And we've been working the last several months to bring on our second poet laureate to bring its residency into its next phase. So we are bringing the awarded artist to you today. Uh, Eric Francis is an accomplished poet and teaching artist. They're based in Green Valley Ranch, just across the street from Adams County. Uh, they have wonderful ties to the community, their mother and sister are teachers in Adams Twelve and they, uh, were very excited about this residency. They're the author of several chapbooks, full-length collection manuscripts, an experimental audiobook and an LP and an EP album of poetry. They've received poetry fellowships with SAFTA, the Chrysalis Institute, Canto Mundo, The Watering Hole. Uh, they've been finalists for several awards, including the Cat Booker Prize, um, the Satinello Books Prize. And not only are they an accomplished author, but they're deeply connected to the Colorado arts community. They've hosted youth programming at Lighthouse Writers Workshop for five years. They served as the event coordinator for the local poetry collective Slam Nuba. Uh, they hosted events all around Colorado, including open mics at Red Line Contemporary Arts Center and Untitled at the Denver Art Museum. Uh, so we are just thrilled to bring them on. We had a, a very unique, um, a very inclusive artist selection panel. Uh, as you know, we have a unique selection panel for each individual project that we do uh, of this caliber and this size. This one had ten jurors sit on the panel. Uh, the award was unanimous. Um, they were selected for the quality of their written work. They're an excellent, excellent writer, the way that they, uh, the way that they interact with the words is just, is just magical. Uh, as well as their beautiful performance, uh, they have an incredibly warm and welcoming energy. And they have a deep love and excitement for poetry and this residency specifically. Their dedication will really build on the momentum that Carrie Joy built over these last several years um, together with ANYTHING and Adams County. Their approach for the residency is focused on deep conversation. So it's all about really intentional conversation, not just the dialogue that sparks, but they really wanna see this residency as an opportunity to be a catalyst for these meaningful connections. Um, we are, we just completed an extensive orientation with them, with Adams County as well as ANYTHING branches, bringing them to all corners of the county. And we're currently in planning to dream up what this residency might look like throughout the next two years. Um, we are planning a welcome breakfast for Eric on Tuesday, September thirtieth, right before a public hearing as an opportunity to um, meet Eric, hear their poetry, hear them perform um, and for the county commissioners and ANYTHING library and leadership stakeholders to welcome Eric as the new laureate. Our plan is to send out a press release in early to mid-September to announce the event and Eric as the new poet laureate. And then the public programming will kick off in early twenty-six and run through summer of twenty-seven.
I have a question. Is this now gonna be a budget-ish line? So it's separate, like, to pay for all this?
That is a good question. So, um, we have submitted it as a budget request. Um, when we first started the program, it was part of the percentage for the arts is the way that we were allocating it. Uh, but because the percentage for the arts has been divided, it's essentially divided in the four funds that we're supported by. And general fund was the one that we were pulling the funds for this. But we're not seeing the funds come in from that and so we have submitted it as a budget request through the cultural arts division.
There's essentially none of general fund projects to, to generate enough money to support the program.
Yeah, I just wanna, like, I think what you've done is such a good job of, I kinda look at the last year with Carrie Joy as like a pilot program. You found the money in a few different spots of the cushy, underneath the cushion here and you found it here. And I, I look at this, that, that unless I have, hear something different from the team, we believe there was enough success with the Carrie Joy thing, let's formalize this as its own program with its own funding. So we don't have to worry about it being something that, like, in the past, even before both you, we had like a couple like art shows and then they went away. And then, like, I think what, where I was excited is to see Pride Fest and Latino Fest and some of these other things become actual budget items. And they serve as kind of a pseudo checklist every year because then they're sustainable and repeatable. And then if we ever decide to remove it, then it's a deliberate, intentional discussion. Uh, to keep it on, kinda default I guess, or intentional take it off. But what I don't wanna do is get into, I wanna break the cycle where some of these other kind of squishy cool ideas go away because we didn't formalize it. And I'd like to say to the team, can we formalize this as a program that we wanna stand by? Of course, we need the dollar figure, but I, I just, I'm trying to help us with the ten years that I've seen here, there's a lot of really cool stuff that we've done and then it goes away, and it goes away. And ones that are sustainable are the ones that you literally put down, it's a line item, and then next year, it's still there. And then when I take it off, then you take it off, but it's not like, oh, I don't know where it went.
What is the twenty-six budget request that you guys have coming forward?
That is a great question, and not one I was prepared to answer at this moment. But, uh, we did submit it, um, and it would be, it's, it's a blend of the artist stipend, the, the small events that we put on with ANYTHING, they also contribute uh, some dollars to this program and then uh, the anthology that we're printing. But I can't remember if we submitted it just as poet laureate or if we actually did it as community programming, which I think we might have done just slightly broader, um, to be, just because a lot of these programs tend to be um, a little more flexible. Like, we know who the laureate is, but we don't know exactly what we're doing yet. Um, and so I think we might have submitted it as community programming.
Yeah, and we can provide you with the specifics, for sure.
That's fair. Yeah, that'll be a discussion here in a month or so, so.
Yeah, and we were really detailed in our requests what the funding would cover. Um, so my apologies, we just went through a couple iterations and I carry my. That's okay, no worries.
So it's general fund, and you're gonna come back with a budget request for twenty-six for this program?
Is it a two-year or one-year program?
This is a two-year.
The last one was two years as well, I think, right?
Yes, yes, but the budget request was only for one year.
Not on the table, as if you approve one year, we're kind of also proving. Sort of, an expectation.
So was this ever part of the arts program? Was it ever come out of the arts program?
As part of this, yes. And we had funding for it when we were doing quite a lot of CIT out of our general fund reserve. And so it filtered into the programming for the arts.
So. Um, are the shares office, so is it by project the art goes back to? Cause we're gonna do some probably major spend in, for the detention center. So I, I'm trying to be.
Capital projects, yes. And we can.
Pardon of the draws on the general fund.
We can send around the, um, just to remind everybody, cause I think it's been a minute and we were intended to come back. Stop allowing me a point at you. But we were intended to come back to outline, um, the percentage of the arts and our SCFD and, and how we plan for art generally. Um, I think in the next month is what we were thinking.
It'll be in the October.
But we can give y'all the, um, bylaws for how it's set up ahead of that.
Okay, I just, okay. I know we're coming back to present on SCFD, are we coming back to present on the percentage for the arts? Cause that's a, that's a whole other, okay, okay, cause that's a.
I know you probably said it, but I, um, what is the amount that we would be contributing annually?
So it's about fifty K, it, well, it is fifty thousand for the artist stipend. And then there are events that will happen over the first year. Well, it actually starts in twenty-five.
The Adams County portion?
Anything contributes ten thousand. The artist stipend.
So ours is forty then?
Yes, but it's over, it's twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven and over that course. So it would be twenty-five K and then twelve, twelve, and then anything contributes ten. And then we have the anthology, which will most likely print out in twenty-seven and that will probably be about fifteen K. And then our events be. I would like to come back to you with an actual. I can jot this down, but I think.
So then just a ballpark, like, it is fifty thousand dollars to the artist, but anything contributes ten. So our portion of that is forty, right? And that, that's.
Not per year, that's the entirety of the two years.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty and twenty-six.
And then does that stipend include all the additional expenses on an ad hoc basis of the additional appearances? No, so it's more than that.
Which is what, right. And so just to be clear, it's only twenty thousand for the artist stipend during the course of twenty-six because the residency actually flanks twenty-five through twenty-seven.
Okay, yes. All right. So additional, there are additional expenses, but the ballpark we're talking is something just a, a little bit north of twenty thousand.
Well, I would say it's around probably thirty-five thousand when you think about events. Or I would say it's around probably thirty five thousand, when you think about events.
For Adams County.
And the anthology, cuz the second, the in twenty seven, the focus will be on the publication and so that's what I would. Ball back right now. So it's south of fifty thousand per year.
Per year. How much?
South of fifty thousand.
Per year?
Per year.
Which is different than the forty thousand.
More than, more than twenty, less than fifty annually from Adams County General Fund.
But I.
It's a hu- I think it's a huge exponential factor. This is one of those things that's an amplifier, I feel like, in community for the spend. That's my perspective on this program.
Well, and and we would like to do more of the community programming, and I know it sounds like we're gonna come back and present this to you, but. The way the percentage for the arts works now is the way we're funded in the four different funds, it's not directly tied to the project. That's how we're funded, but it is directly tied to the fund. So if we're funded for um, you know, uh fifty eighth street. For example, we received funds and we actually did an art project there. If there's a road and bridge fund project that doesn't. Work for art, we can take that money, we still have to spend it in road and bridge this. We have to spend it in another road and bridge area or. Um some some sort of infrastructure integration. And so because of that, we receive funding in road and bridge capital facilities. Open space and and general fund. General fund, we've seen a a really small dollar amount and it's getting smaller and smaller. Whereas in some others, we've seen it significant. So we have funding. In certain areas of the percentage for the arts and not necessarily in the others, so how we receive that funding is. Potentially a a an opportunity for discussion because we have money for the arts. It's just that right now we have a lot of money in capital facilities. Because of the the Brenner Golds project, and so we can't really use that for our community programming out and about. Not related in any way to the regional park program. So. Yeah, I just think that's an important factor. Uh there are limitations in in the current way that it's made up.
I love what you're doing. All I'm saying is let's formalize it because in this conversation, it's very clear, it's not clear. And. And it, and I think it's important that we break the cycle of uh of a lack of clarity because it also creates a lack of consistency. And then what'll happen is if we don't get this clarity upfront, then we're gonna have people. Like learning something and then getting pissy about it and assuming ill intention and we're gonna, let's just frontload all this.
Lots of ever done that.
Let's just frontload all this, name it all out on the table, and then it's never an issue, okay?
It's never an issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dinner is here and.